Okay.
It's showing up on YouTube now. I looked at it.
Good. Thank you, Shenley.
Yeah.
Great.
And we're still waiting for critical mass of planning board members, is that right?
Mark Murray won't be here. That looks like, is that John's iPhone? That might be John Cole. He might be in Colorado.
Mm hmm.
Um, and I believe Lucia's back in town, so. Um, and here she is coming on right now.
There she is.
Um, I got word from Mark, Mark, um, he's, um, out of town on business. He's going to try, but I'm not sure he's gonna be able to make it.
Slacker.
I haven't heard from Matt, so, um.
I haven't either.
But what do we got? I mean, the only thing we're doing today from, uh, um, real, real need is to schedule public hearings.
Right.
Um, so. Um. All right, and there's John Cole coming in, so.
Good. One, two, three, four, five.
All right.
Like a quorum.
Ethan, you ready?
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, I'm all set.
All right.
Waiting for people to roll in, um, all right, we'll go ahead and get started. It's a little after five. Uh, it's the town of Camden, uh, planning board meeting Thursday, February one, twenty twenty four. Um, few items on the agenda, just workshops, um, and scheduled some hearings. Uh, but first we'll start off with any public comment on non-agenda items.
All right, I've got one, Ethan, maybe before the public goes, um.
Okay.
Um, you folks should remember, um, I think everyone on the board was, um, here when we had a public hearing last year, or our last summer on, um, some proposed changes to um, the B one, um, to facilitate some housing, um, dwelling units, apartments um, in the Chestnut Street Historic District and uh, that properties were in the B one Chestnut Street Historic District and were on Washington Street. We kind of had a weird carve out. Um, and for Knox Mill, um, that you guys had a hearing, you voted unanimously in favor of that. Uh, that went to the select board and the select board did not move that to the, um, voters. Uh, that's why that was not on the ballot in November. Um, however, there is new, um, interest and desire to bring a portion of that back. And this really has to do with the school, um, department, school district um, and Montessori School, um, only, um, so what I'm working on, um, with the school department is a, um, likely a, um, a zoning amendment to do just that Chestnut Street B one Chestnut Street Historic District B one to allow multifamily on the first floor. Um, right now you can have in the B one and Chestnut Street Historic District, you can have residential on the first floor if it's a single family and two family. Um, it does not allow it for multifamily. So even a three unit, you couldn't do that on the first floor, have a residential component on the first floor. Um, they have an interest again to, um, bring this back and, um, really specifically looking at, um, the, uh, the Montessori School property, um, they, the Montessori School, um, has a lease that's expiring with them. Um, and the school district has an interest in turning, um, that into res, um, apartments for school staff. Um, I understand they're having a hard time hiring people because there's no housing available, um, if you can imagine. So, um, that is going to the select board as a discussion item on Tuesday. Um, and Maria Libby's going to go to the select board, um, and chat with them about that. I wanted to give you heads up. Um, I did chat with the town attorney to see if we needed to hold another public hearing on that specific issue since we already had a hearing um, in July it was, um, and his perspective is, is we need to have another hearing on it because it's different language. The only languages that different is really pulling out the Washington Street provision, um. Actually, um, there was one property that, um, I kind of air Shenley and I kind of errantly, um, forgot about, um, about that was the DAC, D A A C, um, design building, I think it's forty nine Bayview. We're gonna exclude any properties that are fronting on Bayview Street from the residential multifamily component, and I'm sure you guys would agree with that, um, on Bayview especially, um. So that's it. It only affects like nine properties and we have like the, the town green, couple of churches in those. We have, um, some single family homes. We have the post office, um, and then we have Penob Scott, uh, or the, I'm sorry, Penob Scott, the, um, Montessori School up on, um, up on Union and Elm. So that's all we have. That's, um, likely you'll see that. Um, Ethan, when we do go around to schedule hearings, I'd like to try to include that piece into it, if you don't mind. Um, and we schedule a hearing on that. Um, I will send around, um, draft language before that hearing, but it's going to be, um, almost exactly the same as you saw previously last July, only the Washington Street piece will be cut out as well. We'll add a provision that will not allow a multifamily street level on Bayview if it fronts on Bayview, um, and that's it, um. That's all I have for non-agenda items.
Okay. Um, thanks, Jeremy.
Yep.
So we'll look for that coming from you. Anyone else with any, uh, non-agenda items?
All right.
I'm not seeing any. Just checking here. Okay. All right, well, that takes us then to, um, I don't believe we have any minutes to.
No, sorry about that.
Okay. You guys have been busy, we know. Got you running, um, so yeah, first up, then we're gonna go with, uh, the workshop on peers. Um, a, uh, memo went around, uh, from Jeremy um, with some suggested changes to the language. And, um, hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to review. Um, did you wanna do a little discussion on that, Jeremy, first? A little preview or summary?
Yeah, please. I think I could probably roll through it and let you all, um, um, probably summarize it probably pretty quickly, um. And I just also want to mention, there is an event tonight, Ethan, at the middle school on, um, fish, um, and sea run fish, I think it is. Um, and I just wanna let everyone know that because there may be people on here um, that may want to comment on the peer thing, um, that may be going to the fish thing. So if we can just, um, I don't think this will take too long, Ethan, um, that thing starts at six thirty. Um, okay, sound good? All right, perfect. Um, thank you. Um, so I, I just following up on our last meeting, um, which I thought was a really great, um, discussion, um, you know, all this happened pretty, um, I mean, it all, it was like everything happened all at the same time. It couldn't have happened any, um, I, I don't know. I don't wanna say better because it was horrific what happened during that storm, those two storms, but the night of the select board extending the moratorium for a hundred and eighty days is when that first storm came in, um, and really devastated, uh, a lot of the peers. Um, I think all the peers got hit that devastated that first storm, and then three days later, we had another storm. Um, and clearly from my perspective, the, our standards in place, um, were not enough to address, um, failure of peers, um, and I know just taking that into consideration along with what you folks have had discussions about. Um, initially wanting to try to prohibit peers altogether, uh, and also staying in line with the moratorium, um, language and what voters approved and the harbor committee did, though there were four items, right? There was the wildlife impact in habitat, um, public access, sea level rise, and, um, what was the other, uh, navigation? Now, um, was it navigation? Maybe a brain, yeah, all right. Um, so taking that all into account and knowing you would like, wanted to ban them in our discussion about the Uliano case and, um, um, on, on Pierce, um, I drafted, um, some amendments, um, for Pierce, um, and again, trying to be, I think it's robust and as appropriate as possible, um, is what I did. Um, I did use a lot of, um, there's, I will say, there's not a lot of information on how to construct peers that are actual design manuals, whether it be from Army Corps or FEMA. Um, there's not a lot out there. I did eventually get, find something that FEMA sent to me from the, uh, US Department of Defense on how to construct peers. Um, that's really, that's all that's out there. There's no real manual. So I think the construction and maintenance piece was really critical. Um, I did look, Shenley and I, um, did a lot of research, looking around for information. The state of North Carolina um, has done a lot of work on this very issue, uh, because of all the, um, you know, the, um, the devastating hurricanes they've had and the destruction, lots of it stemmed around peers and docks and floats, um, where they ended up. Um, were they strong enough? Were they high enough? What were kind of best management practices on how, uh, it's best to address those kinds of issues? I realize North Carolina coastline is not exactly like Maine's coastline, um, but they had a lot of very similar issues with failures of peers. Um, so I did go and look at a lot of their information. They had a report done, a really, um, really good report that came out of North Carolina in twenty twenty two, so it's very recent. Um, so that's where a lot of the, some of the standards came from. But getting to the specific amendments, um, keep in mind, uh, you have, there are performance standards in the, uh, the zoning code um, for performance standards in the shoreline zone, and then there are also approval criteria. Those are approval criteria that you review when you review a, a site plan application for a peer or other structure. Um, what I did is I came up with, um, drafted site plan review, new site plan review criteria and performance standards. Um, and I also made sure that in the approval criteria that you reference, and if you'd like me to show it on the screen, I can, or do you guys prefer this? I don't know. I mean, this document's out there, so I'm not sure we need that to be shown. But I can. Let me know. You want that shown or no?
I think just conversation's good.
Okay, perfect. That's, I think, better. Um, so I'll start with the performance standard piece, and I'll just run through this. Um, I think it's the best way to do it. Um, the first one was a general standard. It talks about, um, how, no more than one dock, one pier or dock or other structure, um, shall be located on a lot, on a single lot. There was this provision that allowed except when a single lot contained at least twice the minimum shore frontage as specified, um, you could do a second pier. Um, I'm not sure that would ever get permitted by, um, DEP on the same lot, but, um, I got, I removed that section that allowed someone to put another similar structure on their lot if they had enough frontage or enough, um, lot, lot area. Um, but I also added a provision that said, um, that says no new residential pier shall, um, new residential pier shall only be allowed and permitted upon certification by a professional engineer that a land attached float is not a feasible or practicable alternative for the purposes of birthing and loading and unloading vessels, and that no other alternative is available. Um, the DEP has a similar standard. You've got to prove that you don't have another option available to you. Um, I think this is a good standard, um, especially in the Outer Harbor. I mean, we see, um, people have land attached floats in the Outer Harbor, um, and it does, um, give people an opportunity to, um, um, you know, to moor their boat, to have their boat on their property. Now, keep in mind, while I was drafting these, I had the Uliano case next to me, so I was going through um, and making sure I was trying to dot all the I's and cross all the T's with what, what went to the law court, and the law court also found um, there were other alternatives available, I believe, as I recall. So that's, um, that is what, um, one thing I added. And then I'm gonna jump right. Does anyone have any questions on that piece? Other alternatives, I will say, um, like Bar Harbor, um, in that case on Uliano, there was a available alternative that's used customarily out there is what they call an overhaul system, and I, I'm not a boat or a yacht person, but, um, as I understand, that's totally a, 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 a way to do this. Um, and it's used quite regularly out there, and I, I understand you might, we might not have the, the, the right shore or, or whatever for it and protected areas for an overhaul system and depth of water. I get that. But that's an alternative that people do have, and so what this provision does was, it says, you've gotta provide all, you gotta look at all your available options. And even the DEP in the, or in the Uliano case, um, referenced, um, a marina within X, I think it was three miles of that pier um, was satisfactory as an alternative. Um, so I was kind of, didn't want to go into great detail on what other alternative is available, but they have to look at other alternatives, and that would be something I think that, um, the planning board could, could, um, could ask and could push. Um, any questions on that section? No, okay, I'm gonna keep going. Um, this is where, and maybe I'll, I'll slide over the height question because I think that's something that needs a little more discussion. Um, but you had concerns about, um, uh, proximity to, um, and I know the select board had pro- concerns about, some on the select board had concerns about proximity to, and, and the public does um, to town property where we may desire to put a pier or a structure at some point. Um, we have a provision currently, um, that, um, peers need to be set back three hundred feet from each other. Um, I drafted a provision that says no new residential pier shall be built within two hundred feet as measured along the shoreline from the boundary of line of Camden Hills State Park or any public right of way, uh, providing access to the shore of the outer coastal harbor, including but not limited to Lake Beach, um, Bay Road, Curtis Island, Overlook, Beacon, which is Beacon Ave, um, Baby there, Eaton Ave, Harbor Road, Marine Ave, and Sherman's Point Road. Um, so I have that in there, um, if any peers, if you make it through the process that you can't prove you have another option, you'll have to make sure you're at least two hundred feet from those locations. Um, any questions on that section? Nope, okay, you're gonna keep going. Um, and then I looked, I showed you wildlife habitat maps previously, um, that included wa- title bird and, and waterfall waiting habitat, and um, if you look at the mesh, those natural resource co-occurrence map and the value one, um, there also includes like sea run brook trout habitat. There's a whole host of things that fall into that, and I specifically talked about that because of Spring Brook. Um, that is a significant, uh, resource in town, um, and a cold water fishery for sure. Um, so I got a new, new provision, we know new pier shall be constructed in areas designated as significant wildlife habitat with a value of one or higher on that map. Um, and, um, and I also defined what that is because you would have to reference to state, um, Title Thirty Eight, Chapter Three, Subchapter One. Um, so I referenced where that, what that is, significant wildlife habitat is under state law. Um, and then I provided, I gave, uh, there's an out there, there's a provision that that section may be waived, and I'll get to that, uh, in a little bit. Um, moving on to the next piece, um, also say that no new pier uh, shall be constructed in areas designated as tidal waterfall and waiting bird habitat as depicted on the high value plant and animal habitat, uh, map prepared by IFN W. Again, that has a provision that can be waived. Um, and then I went to eelgrass. Um, this is fascinating. I will say I had a, uh, conversation with A- Angie Brewer. She is the, um, marine unit leader, um, at DEP that, um, reviews and assesses, um, wildlife habitat, eelgrass habitat. They do surveys. Um, interesting, they're doing a survey. It was kind of fortuitous that I chatted with her today. They're doing a full-on eelgrass, um, survey and assessment of Camden Harbor this summer. Uh, and along the coast, um, this summer they're doing that, um, and she has agreed to come and talk to you folks on February fifteenth, when Pete Slavinsky is going to come. Um, so she's going to, um, give a, a probably a, a brief overview of what eelgrass is, the importance of eelgrass um, to the, to the marine ecosystem, um, and she's gonna do that on the fifteenth, um, and then have some, be able to answer some questions from you. Um, she reviewed this, um. So what I had drafted was no new residential pier shall be constructed in or near areas containing eelgrass. Um, eelgrass location maps are provided by DMR, and the latest dated map shall be used. In the event that the proposed location is not within a mapped eelgrass area on the latest dated eelgrass map, um, the applicant shall provide evidence and a certified determination from qualified individ- individual that no eelgrass is located at or near the proposed location. Um, and I, I included for purposes of this section, near means within fifty feet of any part or pertinence of the proposed pier. Um, there is a waiver provision too. I will say, after talking with her, um, eelgrass, um, is very sensitive, um, and, um, they really don't have great maps. Um, that's why they're doing these studies right now, um, especially Camden Harbor. Um, what she suggested, and I have added, and I've tweaked this, um, that you can't construct one in or near, um, areas containing eelgrass or in historically mapped areas of eelgrass. She said that's critical to the eelgrass population, um, in the state of Maine, because what they're finding is, is eelgrass may not be, you know, it, it comes and goes from certain areas, um, over time, um, but due to a whole host of reasons, the eelgrass again may not occupy a site, but then that site is very critical. Um, at some point in the future, eelgrass does recolonize in that area, um, and she thought it would be very important to include something like that. So I've added that provision, um, in here as well, um. And also, um, again, that little, um, that little, the provision where it's a qualified individual has to say that no eelgrass is looking at or near that site. Um, they also have to, um, make sure that that site was never mapped as an eelgrass location. Um, that's, that's where we are there. Any questions on that? Um, great discussion with her. I spent an hour on the phone with her today, um, and she thought it was, um, pretty neat that the town of Camden was looking at these kind of, um, standards for permitting, um, for these kind of structures, um. She really thought it was really forward thinking, so. Um, new peers, um, I also have a provision that talks about new pier shall be constructed in, on, or near areas containing unstable or highly unstable bluffs. Um, and then you would use the coastal bluff map prepared by Maine Geological Survey. Um, and I did point out that this map should be used by property owners and design professionals for planning purposes. And the reason I did that was a com- a comment came up at the last meeting about the validity of those maps, unlike when they, I think there was some reference in the map that they were done by interns and X year or whatever, um, they're ground truthing all those areas. They're starting that this year, so the state's trying to do that. Um, but that's why it particularly just said it's for planning purposes. So you actually have to, the engineer has to use those maps, and then he has to go out and verify that that area is in fact uh, unstable or highly unstable bluff, um, and then, um, I also included there that near means one hundred feet of the location or site of the proposed pier, so you would not be able to locate a pier within a hundred feet. Um, if there was a, a unstable or highly unstable bluff within a hundred feet of your pier, um, even if your location didn't have a unstable or highly unstable bluff, if there was one within a hundred feet, you couldn't get it. And the reason behind that is, and I think this is a good kind of Pete Slavinsky on the fifteenth, we'll talk about it, the impact of, um, wave action and surge and sea level rise on land masses like bluffs, um, they change rapidly, um, and so having, um, where they can, having a hundred foot setback from a bluff area is critically important, and because of the, the, and talking with Angie Brewer too, talking about the scour that occurs in and around peers and other armored, armored structure, armored shoreline, um, really, um, you know, not only does it, you know, change the sediment transport that's happening and should happen naturally, um, it, it's actually, um, you know, just undermining, um, these bluffs potentially, so, and making some bluffs maybe that aren't unstable, they may become sta- unstable. Um, so it's something, that's why that hundred foot provisions in there. Um, and then there's a provision that talks about no new pier shall be constructed in, on, or near coastal sand dunes as defined in, um, Thirty Eight MRS four eighty B. Um, and then I referenced the map of that, and for the purposes of that section, I term, uh, near shall mean within fifty feet of the location of that site.
Jeremy, uh, just a quick question, these setbacks, um, you've got these from some other source?
Um, in talking with people and reading on this, on this stuff, the, it seems to be that, I mean, every site's different, right? It's really hard to come up with a standard, um, site. I mean, you might have some, a whole property might have ledge, and then you go around a cove and it might be a sandy, you know, area, so, um, yes, I mean, these came from, um, in talking, again, talking with Angie Brewer and talking with professionals on these, they felt that these were appropriate setbacks from those locations. Um, that makes sense, um. So sand dune maps, you've got that, um, and then there's a provision that allows, allows the planning board to waive these requirements. Um, and that really says the prohibition of these peers may be waived uh, uh, upon review and submittal of wildlife and habitat studies, resource assessments and certification by qualified individuals, i.e. wildlife biologists, marine biologists, PEs that the proposed location and site of the proposed pier does not qualify as significant wildlife habitat with a value of one or higher, or that the specific area does not qualify as moderate or high value plant and animal habitat for tidal waterfall and waiting bird. Um, and does not contain eelgrass at or near the proposed location and is not located in historically mapped areas of eelgrass. Um, goes on to say that for the purposes of significant, significant wildlife habitat, um, for these assessments, um, they also need to include, um, areas within two hundred and fifty feet of the proposed location, so it's just not, um, the immediate area um, of your property necessarily. It may, might be further beyond, um, they still have to review that, those areas and do studies on them. Um, and then I give a little provision on what they, um, shall include in a resource, um, assessment. Um, then there is a provision for third-party review, which requires the applicant, um, they're required to pay for the cost for the town to, um, retain the services of marine biologist, PEs, wildlife, um, biologists to, uh, review and maybe even do their own studies, um, of those areas, um, and then provide comment to you folks. Um, so it would not just be um, an applicant's design professionals that are reviewing a project and providing you information, technical information. It would be actually, um, you know, experts that are working for the town in essence, reviewing these applications and reviewing their materials, and if necessary, I had a provision that they may even be, um, have to go do their own resource assessments on their own, um, again, paid for by the applicant. Um, and then we get to construction and maintenance standards. This is something that was completely lacking and not in our, um, code at all, um. And I, I talked with FEMA, um, at great length about this, um. There, um, I will say FEMA is quite impressed that we're trying to do something like this, um, they haven't seen something like this, at least in the state of Maine, um, to regulate, uh, the maintenance standards of these peers um, and construction standards, um, because I will say, if you look at the flood ordinance, which I'm gonna be working on this, uh, hopefully for next November, um, ballot, um, the flood standards, they are what they are, um, they're very minimum, they, with the town to adopted the pretty much minimum standard, required flood ordinance way back when. Um, and it's just carried it on through. Um, there is no requirement in the flood ordinance to have a PE, uh, prepare, um, plans for residential peers. Um, so I know you guys asked them, we asked for them, but there is no requirement. Um, so we're gonna make that a mandatory requirement, um, in the flood code eventually, but it is a requirement of um, this provision for construction standards, it will be, um. We do say, and I will, I ran into some issues and have always struggled with engineers that pro- provide permitting plans and permitting drawings only. And then they, the project starts, and then there are these other plans that show up, and these are the construction drawings, the construction plans, um, if you will. Um, and what I'm asking for now is that these plans are going to be, um, need to be designed by qualified engineers and designed and maintained. Well, this is, before I get to that construction piece, I think this is critical, especially in light of what happened to all of these peers, um, in the harbor, um, when they, um, when the storms hit. Says that all pier shall be designed by qualified P- engineers and shall be designed and maintained to prevent buoyancy and flotation of any part of the structure. Um, so in essence, what I'm, we're looking at, and again, this is North Carolina, looked at this and drafted this and studied this for a while. Um, they're looking at it and, and I- Um, they're looking at it and and I reviewed it and it makes sense that when these things fail, they need to, they need to drop. They, they can't float out in the harbor, um, risking, you know. Damage to property, individuals or the wildlife habitat, I mean, we know where these ended up over in Sherman's Cove. And you look at those maps, Sherman's Cove is a pretty um sensitive and important area, um. Uh, you know, from wildlife habitat perspective, eelgrass, it's all that, all there, um, so we, that was a provision to address that. And then the engineering documents and plans shall be designed for construction and shall not be prepared for permitting purposes only. I I made that a a requirement, um. And as I understand, there's a little bit more oomph that goes into those plans and a little more um liability falls on those engineers when they're. When their construction drawings and not just for permitting purposes only, um. And then I do have a provision in there that says the planning board may require third party evaluation of the engineering documents and plans for compliance with any design management. Construction of such structures. Uh, and then requires the town, uh, requires the applicant to pay for um for that third party review. Um, we don't have an engineer, structural engineer on staff, I can't expect. Chandler or I or Dave St. Laurent or whoever the town brings on. Town staff to review these plans, so we're going to make them um pay, do the work and pay for um the engineering review. Similar to what we did, we do and have in subdivision, um, our subdivision code, which allows third party review of stormwater and things like that. And you guys did that well, and that's working great, to be honest with you out at Nord Haven, um. Uh, okay, getting to the uh um construction performance and maintenance standards, um, these shall apply to all new peers. And the repair, replacement or maintenance of existing peers, so these, for these peers that failed. Um, if they're going to want to put those back, um. They're going to have to comply with these requirements, um. Again, crib or pile supported pier shall be designed in such a way as to prevent failure of the supporting crib work um or piles due to erosion and scour of the structural supports. Um, all peer elements shall to the greatest extent practicable be designed and constructed. Of materials that do not become buoyant and or leave permitted location due to wave action or storm surge or peer failure. Uh, the pier shall be designed to and built to withstand predicted wind loads, wave action and storm surge. Based on past storm forces. And peers must be designed to withstand at a minimum, the erosion scour and loads accompanying a minimum of the fifty year storm event. Or whatever storm event is represented at the site during the past decade. Uh, the evaluation should also include the historical, historic tidal, current surge and wave energies at the site. Um. They would have to, in essence, design these um peers to be able to withstand. The three um very bad storms that hit Camden um in the last thirteen months, um. And again, this came from that North Carolina um information, that report that came out of North Carolina recommendations and BMPs that they did and prepared. And that was after them dealing with lots of hurricanes over long, many years and seeing a lot of failures and disaster and damage to wetlands and marshes. Um, and others, other um property, um, for failures of peers. Uh, and then there's a provision that talks about reinforced bracing and or anchoring for peers. Um, high energy and or storm prone coastal areas such as the VE zone, additional bracing of the construction element shall be provided. Reinforcement may include but not be limited to modifications to gird- to girders, connections, pilings and cribbing. Um, in addition to reinforcing construction elements, adding support anchoring may be used to reduce damage and loss of peer structures. Uh, they need to incorporate stainless tie downs at support points and anchors to reduce lift of the structure during storms. Uh, these may include stainless steel cable, let's kind of go on to what they, what they possible um that they could use. Um, and as they add additional strength and reduces the likelihood of the structure become dislodged or washed out during a storm event. Uh, then they also need protection of connectors, fasteners and hardware from corrosion. Um, it just says you got to use stainless or hot dip galvanized after fabrication. Um. Then from a maintenance piece, we require. I would just say we require all the moorings to be inspected every year in Camden Harbor, but there is no requirement that uh the peers. Uh, or their floats or anything else are main, are inspected annually. Um, so what this would do, this would require a maintenance plan as part of site plan review. Um, that includes a plan to monitor and inspect the pier and all of its components, structural or otherwise annually. Um, we provide a, a, a reference of FEMA's Hurricane and Flood Mitigation Handbook for Public Facilities Fact Sheet five point five. Maybe we say that may be used as a guide for monitoring inspection and the maintenance plan, um, that's a great document, um. And we're going to actually implement that in the town harbor with all of our stuff, as I understand, I've chatted with Audrey about that, um. It makes sense, um, we're going to make property owners do their peer owners do that, um. And then the owner shall also provide an inspection report prepared by a qualified individual. Uh, to the code officer annually and every third year, the inspection report shall be prepared and stamped by a qualified PE, um. And after severe storm events as determined by the town of Camden, and I made that provision because. You know, if the third year isn't for, they just gave us one and then all of a sudden we had a storm event like we had. I want the town to be able to require. Require the owner of that pier to hire a engineer to assess the um, to assess their pier. Um, and how it made out, made through that storm event, um. And then it does apply, all owners of existing peers shall submit a monitoring um maintenance and inspection plan along with an inspection report by August thirty first. Twenty twenty four, and then annual inspection report shall be provided to code officer, um. Consistent with the section up above, which then says they have, they're going to have to submit that and engineers one annually or every three years as well.
Take care, Mike?
Yes.
Uh, just a quick question on the annual inspection component.
Yeah.
If an inspection report comes into town offices. And it says that this pier is in danger of being undermined. What's the, what's the town's? Reaction to a report that says something to that effect?
Um, that's a good point, um, John, um, I mean, what I think we would do is we would, um. And I'll have to chat with Bill about this, I, I didn't think about that one enough, um, odd, because this is what I do every day, this kind of stuff and have been for so long on the enforcement side. Um. I mean, certainly we would get that report, the owner would get that report first, right? And then they deliver it to us, and if we see that there's structural failure, um, I think we could probably move forward under. I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to figure that out a little bit, um, and maybe we need to add a provision in here. Um, I see Bill Kelly here, um, Bill, you got any comments on that one specifically?
Sure, I think it's just a function of when the permit is issued, it merely indicates that it's issued consistent with the ordinance. And if you wanted to, you could be very clear and add a line in the permit that simply says that, um. Uh, a condition of the permit is passing inspections. And upon a failure, it has to be fixed, I mean, it, I think it doesn't have to necessarily be in the language in the, um. Um. In great detail, but that's how I would do it.
All right, so like in the permit piece, we could issue it with the condition that it shall be maintained consistent with the approved documents. Something like that, the approved construction drawing. Right, I mean, that would cover it. If there's failure after that, then we know that they're no longer. You know, um, consistent with that approved drawing, right? I mean, that's, that's how I would handle it. So that makes sense, John?
Yeah, give us some thought, I just, it would be a shame to require all that additional effort.
And not have any oomph.
Not have it coming, I think.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, it wouldn't be covered necessarily in, in the criteria. But if that scenario happens, um. You know, does the town take? Does the town take possession of that pier? Does the town remove that, like? But how do, you know, because the, the goal of this is to have peers that don't fail and end up.
Drifting.
You know, so if, if the property owner does not do the required maintenance work. Can the town step in and? Do something so that that pier does not fail?
The short answer is yes, and we, we use enforcement actions which. Um, are typical, we don't simply get to take over somebody's pier because it's a private property right, it's been permitted. But the failure to comply with the, the permit or the ordinance then triggers the court's jurisdiction. And that also typically includes injunctive relief if we need it, um, so. It, it's a court oversight of a process that may involve the town doing the repairs if necessary. And then assessing those to the property owner, be a pretty rare thing, but we have to just be careful of property rights.
Yeah, no, that's, I, 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 again, I was, I, I, I wasn't really thinking so much the, the legal, I was actually thinking. When we don't need to get into it now, but what would be the, the? Actual mechanical processes that the town would take in, in such a scenario. Um, is something that will need to be.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think Bill just kind of stated it, I mean, we'll, we'll make sure that the permit documents, um. Do say that they need to be maintained per the um approved plans. Um, and then should there, should we get a report back that says they're not no longer consistent with those approved plans and there's some failure happening? We would order, again, a fix within X number of days, generally a fix from that kind of perspective is like thirty days. Um, we could go less probably, um, if it's a like serious. Structural failure, life safety issue, we could probably go faster. And then if they did not comply, then we would file something in um in court, and then that's where Bill was talking about, we get some injunctive relief on, on doing something. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm going to go quick because I know, I think there may be some people that want to comment, um. Um, owner liability, owner of all new and existing or rebuilt peers assumes any and all liability for any and all property damage and personal injury claims. It may arise having to do with said pier, should any part of the pier fail. And leave the project site for any reason, the owner is responsible for all cleanup costs and damages that may be associated with the failure of said pier. Including by not limited to cleanup or and or salvage of any and all pure components of the failed or damaged pier. In addition, the owner is responsible for any damage that may be caused to any real property of any other property owner or other users of the town's harbors. Um, the owners of all new existing peers shall provide evidence of at least two million dollars worth of liability coverage on said pier. Evidence of continued liability coverage shall be submitted to the code officer annually along with the maintenance uh inspection report. Um, for new peers applicants must submit evidence of liability coverage uh along with site plan application materials. Um, existing peer owner shall submit evidence of liability and coverage by August thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Um. Hey Jeremy, I just want to jump in real quick, um, we had, we had a question in the chat that maybe we could just touch on, it's from James Bennett. Uh, the ordinance being discussed is for peers, but do the requirements also apply to bulkheads and or seawalls that secure the peers?
Yeah, and I'm going to just say that this is drafted to apply to peers, I mean, the discussion that has to happen around seawalls is a much, much, much bigger discussion. Um, and I'm not prepared to put anything forward to the select board, um, for June on seawalls. Um, I mean, I think we can um deal, if, if we have failing seawalls, we could likely deal with that on our own currently. Um, but I'm not prepared, it's a big discussion on seawalls, I mean, that is much, much broader than. Me doing research on, on coming up with something here, I mean, seawalls have significant impact, I mean, I think, um. You know, Pete Slavinsky may be able to touch base on some of those things, but it has significant impacts, not only on. Um, adjacent properties, but on against sediment transport, I mean, there's a whole host of things that. Um, are involved with, with. Seawalls, um, and retaining walls and armor, um. It's a big deal and I think it's definitely something that the town needs to look at, but I'm not prepared to. Um, I don't have the wherewithal to move something forward on seawalls, I appreciate Jim's comment, but that's a much, much bigger discussion. Um, I mean, I think it's certainly the inner harbor, right? And locations where we have existing pier or existing seawalls, I mean, we have a, um. For the most part, um, a vertical wall around the harbor except for at, um. We have a somewhat of a, a vertical wall at Harbor Park, but that gets overtopped all the time, right? Um, but the other, other walls um around from, from the yacht club over to um Lyman, um. Yeah, um, so we know what those are, but it's a much bigger discussion, I can't, I can't.
Yeah, I just wanted to get out, so thanks, Jeremy.
Yeah, um, and then there's a provision about municipal liability that I included, um, pretty much saying the town has no, um. Does not assume any liability um for damages um to the permitted project or persons or property. Um, of a permitted or unpermitted activity for the design, construction deficiencies, um, et cetera, um. And that's a permanent condition of all peers, um, that's in there, um, so left to talk about for me. Is there was this, there's, and I, I think it's appropriate, there are some towns in Massachusetts that are doing it. Um, regulating peers in the, in the velocity zone, the VE zone. Um, and I'm trying to come up with, I will say, I'm trying to come up, if you look at the VE zone, how it's defined, it doesn't really, it talks about. Uh, you know, one percent um annual chance of flooding and wave action is pretty much how it talks about wind and wave action. Uh, it doesn't really go into much more than that, keeping in mind that. FEMA's flood maps are really primarily just for flood insurance, it's really not, doesn't tell you where floods are going to occur. Um, necessarily, because we know that floods occur in areas much greater than that, um, that, that area that's mapped. So, um, I'm trying to see if there's some better language, but um, there are, is, there are provisions um that I've seen. That prohibit, um, and it's, I think worthwhile, uh, to maybe include is to prohibit um peers in the velocity zone. Um, unless, and I, I will say, uh, Bourne, Mass, I think is the town. Um, and Falmouth, I believe, has a provision on this, um, that says no new resident, and what I drafted. Um, and this is not included in what I sent to you, I drafted over the last couple of days. Was that no new residential pier shall be built in areas designated as a velocity VE zone on the most recent FEMA flood maps unless the specific location. Is an area which is historically one, a harbor of safe refuge as defined in forty six CFR. Um, as, in quotes, a poor inlet or other water body abnormally sheltered from heavy seas by land. And which the vessel can navigate and safely more. Um, or two, other areas not susceptible to significant storm damage as certified by qualified engineer or other individual. Um, so that's another provision that I didn't include to you previously, but we had talked about, I think I talked about it last time. About the VE zone, I sent you a VE map. I will say the VE map covers the entire outer harbor and the entire coastal harbor, um, that's. That's the, um, that's the village, or I, I say village, V and VE is our, we have zoning districts, so. Um, lost my train there, but um, that's the, that's the entirety of the velocity zone in Camden is the outer and coastal harbor. So, if you included this provision, it would prohibit them outright in the VE. Um, but it does give people, and it does say that if you, it's an area that's protected. Um, you could, you could do it, um, but that's something to think about, um, I will probably draft that and have that as a. A piece of this going forward for the hearing, and if you want to include it, we'll include it, if not, we'll pull it out. Um, either way, but I think, um, I think it's probably appropriate, um. I'm not sure, I mean, the construction standards and design standards are very rigorous, I think. Um, and I think these peers are going to be, um. Going to be a lot to permit one, right? There's a lot of review, it's not just the PE that is, you know, doing the site plan and civil work. Um, showing you the, you know, the length of the pier and all that. But they're also going to have to do, uh, provide us with all of the environmental assessments, the resource assessments. Um, and in essence, you've got to prove wherever you are that you're not, don't have any habitat, significant habitat. Um, eelgrass, et cetera, all those things, so. Um, that's something I'd like to get your comments on, um, on the, the, um. These performance standards, um, and then we'll want to talk about really. Um, quick and maybe it shouldn't be quick, but as the height piece, I'm just going to quickly jump over to the site plan review criteria. Um, you guys had two approval criteria currently in the ordinance. One said, the code, one says the project must not cause undue erosion on or near the site. I've changed that to say the project must not cause undue erosion or scour on or near the site or on abutting properties. Um, it just ramps it up a little bit, scours generally occurs when there's structure, wave action. Um, against structures, and that's what's happening, um, we're seeing that, I think if you can look at some of the, um. Granite cribbing, that's, um, has seen on some of these peers has seen scour around it, you look at the base of seawalls. There's scour, that's what they call that, it's just not erosion, that's scour, um. It caused by the impact of the wave action on the actual structure itself, and then it undermines um scours there. Um, so that's one I included, and then your other standard says the proposed use must not cause degradation of marine life in or near the area. Uh, it does say the board, um, I just added or qualified individual, uh, because the current ordinance just says a marine biologist, um. I wanted to ramp that up a little bit, um, or the quali- qualified individual, and I say that because, um, there's other. Other people, other specialists may need to be brought in, um, so I just want to include that, um. Um, and then I have seven more new approval criteria or, or what, five more? Um, one says the project shall not unduly interfere with passage along or within the intertidal zone. In order to protect established colonial public trust rights for fishing, filing and navigation. This may require accommodations such as steps or pier elevation to allow passage over or beneath a structure. Um, that came out of, I think Cumberland, I told you about that last, last week or a couple of weeks ago. Um, and that would either again require someone to build stairs over. Um, their pier, um, or uh, require a height such that, um, the people can walk underneath it at all times. The next one would be there shall be no re- unreasonable interference with general navigation by the existence or use of the um, pier. And no attempt shall be made by the applicant or permatee to prevent the full and free use by the public of all navigable waters at or adjacent to the pier. Um, that's another standard. I did not create that standard. I think it's a great standard. That actually comes from the Army Corps. Um, and just pointing it out. Um, I like the standard, I, when I say it comes from Army Corps, it does not mean that you need to find the same. Um, finding on that standard as Army Corps did. Um, you are a different board, you're a different review authority. Um, and you can find, find. However you feel. So because someone may have an Army Corps permit in place. Um, doesn't necessarily mean that you find the same, it meets the same standard. And okay, next one would be for peers, peer projects involving construction of or repair, replacement and maintenance of bank or shoreline stabilization. Structures including but not limited to riprap armor or retaining wall shall be designed to minimize environmental effects and. Um, minimum, environmental effects and effects to neighboring properties from scour and erosion to the maximum extent practical. Um. That's again, a new standard. Um, you would have to find that, um, based on your review. Um, and your third party consultant that you are ess- essence going to have working on your behalf to provide you, um. With information to, um. Um, make findings on these applications. Um. And then the, the next one would be that the project uh, shall not unreasonably impact the view shed and existing scenic and aesthetic resources of Camden's harbors. And Penobscot Bay from Camden Hill State Park, Curtis Island, Late Beach and other pa- public access points to the harbor, including Bay Road, Curtis Island Overlook. Eaton Avenue, Harbor Road, Marine Ave, and Sherman's Point Road, or other place or location. That is frequented by the public for the purposes of enjoying the natural environment and scenic resources. Um, that is, uh, that's that view aesthetic, um. Visual impact, um, standard. Um, I will say that I'm sorry, I meant to send it to you folks today, um, and I didn't. Shenley found. Back from nineteen ninety, Terrence Dewan, I think it was nineteen ninety, Terrence Dewan, a, a architect. Landscape architect, and he actually did the, um, no, that was TY Lynn, sorry. Um, I know. Terrence Dewan from somewhere else. Um, he did a visual for the state planning office in nineteen ninety. He, they went around and looked at. Coastal view sheds and they found that Camden's. Um, view shed is significant, um, resource. Um, and I was going to include that for you and likely maybe try to make a reference to that in this report. Uh, or in this, in this code amendment, um, because I think that's. I think it's critical. I mean, again, you know, so many studies get done and reports get made and they end up sitting on. Um. You know, on, on, on someone's shelf and, and hardly used. Um, this one. Um, was, was pretty neat to find and it referenced Camden Harbor, the islands, um, and actually provided. Critical view corridors, um, um, from the harbor too, so, uh, and from property. Um. And then the last one would be that in addition to the special criteria above the planning board, you use, you can use the per- performance standards and criteria contained in. Um, those performance standards that I just shared with you, um, during your review. Um. That's what I have. The one piece that I didn't, we didn't discuss. Is height, um, and I had gotten some comment, um, and I saw Ben Allison, he was here, he provided some comment to me. Um. This is a hard nut to crack a little bit for me, um. I will say like, was it Cape Elizabeth, Cape Elizabeth back in the, I think it was early, it was like. I don't, two thousand fourteen, maybe two thousand seven, started looking at. What was appropriate. Um, height, they were more looking at it from a perspective of where does the shoreline zone start? Um, we talk about normal high water or mean high water, um, normal high water is, is how the shoreline starts, um. And then they ended up using highest astronomical tide plus three feet. And that's where, um, the shoreline starts. Um, that has a pretty big implication. For property, certainly down there more than it does here, based on the geology and geography of the land. Um, it's much more gradual there. So when you're all of a sudden as adding hat plus three feet. Um, you all of a sudden, a much larger area gets taken into shoreline zone, um, area. We don't have such an issue here. Um, but we're not really talking about that. We're talking about water level, how high should a pier be from the water level? Um, and the current code says, and this went to voters last, um, year. Um, it said shall not exceed, um, eight feet. Um, it was six feet prior to that. Um, and then in the, um, outer, in the coastal harbor, it says shall not exceed ten feet above mean high water. Um, my proposal, what I had drafted, and I'm not, this is not, I'm not, this is not necessarily right. And what I've, some feedback I've heard is, um, because what I did was I said it shall not be less than. Eight feet above mean high water. Um, and then I, I also. Um, changed it, want to change it to shall not be less than ten feet above mean high water for the coastal. Um, there, I've heard some comments and concerns about that standard. If it's a less than. Meaning people could create very large and tall peers, um, high up out of the water. Um, that may be, um, but the reality too is remember you have this visual. An aesthetic standard that is in front of you, um, that will be in front of you. And I mean, you're a board, every board may be different, so. One board may find something is visually okay and the aesthetics of something's okay and one board may not. Um, but there is that standard that's in place. Um, so if I was on the board looking at the standard, I mean, they're going to have to provide you with. Um, you know, um. Imagery that has the new pier superimposed at mean high water, at low water, all that stuff is how I would. They're going to have to propose, prepare that kind of document for you, um, and, and imagery is for you, um, to meet those standards. So. I don't know what to do on that. I, I'm willing to take some public comment. Or a comment from you guys and the public on it. Um, I know Ben Allison had, um, mentioned something to me about it. Um, so I don't know where to go with that one, but, um. Feel free to jump in and, um, add anything. Ethan, I know we're probably running. Little longer than I wanted to, and it's six thirty, that river thing's going to start. I didn't know if you wanted to maybe grab some public comment. Beforehand, so we can at least get public comments from, from some folks on this before they may want to attend that river, uh, fish. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, thanks Jeremy, uh, very thorough, thorough job on this. Um, I'll send you along some minor copywriting edits, but I, I've got some stuff here for, I want some people to have a chance to chime in, as you said. So, um. Let's take a look here and see, um, if anybody from the public wanted to speak. Um. Okay, I see Allison and Barb, so I'll go with Allison first and then Barb.
Hi, thank you, um, Allison McKeller, seventy nine, Mechanic Street. Um, I. Really appreciate the thorough exercise here because I know I've learned a lot about the different. Maps that are available and even though I thought I had studied this a lot, um, I've learned a lot of new stuff through this discussion, so. Thank you for that. Um, I worry a little bit about the, um. What we're setting ourselves up for with future boards. Um, what I've. Seen in the past is a strong tendency to defer to the. First agency or the first entity that looks at this. And so. Right now what happens is the, uh, NERPA permit is the first. Part of this, and for whatever reason, very few people find out about that. And then the state goes to this process and then by the time it comes to the town, whether it be the committee or a select board. Um, or the. Planning board, there is NERPA approval. And there tends to be, um, an idea in everyone's mind that this process is incredibly robust. When in fact, they, they have no resources to be fact checking all of these applications and we can find numerous examples. Of mistakes in these applications. And then of course. Examples where, um, projects were denied based on relatively, um, you know, some, some might say small. Um, issues. So, you know, mostly coming down to visual impact and then those, uh, decisions upheld. And the main difference in all of those outcomes isn't the way that DEP looked at that visual impact. Um, assessment and said, well, okay, let's look at all the criteria. It's because of the comments that they received, which trigger. Additional review. And so, um, what happens is it comes to the, to the planning board or whoever and. They say, oh, they already looked at that, so it must be okay. It must be not very visually impactful. So I would caution. Um, that process because this planning board is going to be very aware of that, possibly this select board. Also this harbor committee, but in the future, um. It's, it's very easy to miss that when that's not all like in the forefront. Of your mind. So any way that we could sort of reverse that process, I think would be important. So we can use, um, that NERPA review. As an opportunity for like robust public input here. The other thing, um, is that. I worry that we are going to be engaging in an endless debate with engineers. About whether something could withstand the swarm of January twenty twenty four. And, um, that that's setting the town up. For just spending an incredible number of resources, if not in, in staff time. Simply also board time, you know, there's only, there's a limited bandwidth, I think, with all of the boards to be reviewing all of this. And. Overall, I wish that our ordinance could capture kind of the historical knowledge. Of the people who live here. I sent a picture of a, of a dinghy haul out on Sherman's Point. And it's, you know, just, uh, it's like the Curtis Island system where it's just a tow rope and you pull your dinghy in and it gets you to a mooring. And that's been, um, very appropriate. It's been there for a very long time. It lasts, it's, um, you know, can be taken out. When it's not working. And every pier that gets put in the, in the coastal harbor ends up getting destroyed eventually. Um, it's the main purpose of, of the. Right to wharf out is really to provide safe and reasonable access to the water. And the velocity zones are not safe and reasonable places. So I. I think that, um, the, the provisions like in Falmouth, Massachusetts, where they say that there has to be, um. It's going to be in the velocity zone, there has to be a public benefit or something like that. They have to prove that. Um, you know, it is actually a safe place. I think that should be, you know, our, our focus. Um, and that it would, it would uncomplicate things a lot. They're very safe places and smart places in our harbor. To have possibly even more infrastructure, the inner harbor. Um, expanding on public and private, commonly owned infrastructure, Lyman Morse, the yacht club, all of that. Um, but, uh, you know, the high velocity zones don't seem safe. So, thank you, and. I, I appreciate all your time.
Thanks, Allison. Good point.
Barb? Yeah.
You're muted, Barb.
Sorry. I'm baby seeing a dog and now I have three dogs in the house, so I, sorry. It's first thing here. Um. I'm representing the Conservation Commission, but I wanted to. Totally support. Pretty much everything that, um, Jeremy had to say, but I also want to reiterate, but. Um. I'm sorry. That. Um, different, when new peers are built, when peers are built, they have a huge impact on everything around them, including. As we've learned from all these things falling down here, now the. Um. You know, grass and everything that, now we have to clean up. And who is going to pay for that? So, um. I just think we have to keep in mind that.
Up, she got muted again.
You're muted again, Barb.
We have dogs here, but, um, I want to reiterate that, um. We have to be careful when we're building new peers that. Any new peers that get involved have to be. Considered how would they get an impact on the. Sensitive areas in the harbor. So maybe in, right now, our. Our rules say that we can. Put a pier anywhere within three hundred feet of next pier. Maybe that can be expanded to. A much, much, much larger feat, so. Okay, we also need to consider, uh, what, when the peers are attached to a land, how it. Impacts the land around them, the, um, armoring, et cetera. I'm sorry, we have a little. Situation here, so I'll let someone else take over.
Anyone else? Lucia.
Yeah, I, um, this is just on the heights, one of the last things that Jeremy, um, spoke about. And I'm just wondering, you know, perhaps it is sort of self-explanatory. Um, or it's in there enough that, um, the standards on visual aesthetics need to be adhered to, but perhaps in that particular section. Because you have a not, or, um, you have a not, not lower than, perhaps the not to exceed can say. Something a- again, you know, um, subject to the standards on, um. Visual aesthetics. Et cetera, just so that. You know, the, the, um, the applicant actually knows that there are other things, um, that are going to guide this.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Yeah, and I can see why Jeremy, why you're stuck on that a little bit. It's, it's that never ending. Uh, struggle between going high enough and making it a looming structure. And so, um, you know, there, there has to be a balance there. And I think. The looming aspect of that, what Lucia is speaking to, the, the aesthetic part of it. And then the height, of course, the, the mean water or whatever we choose. And I think we all know that those standards are. Are not, not great and, and certainly didn't. Pardon the pun, hold water this last storm. Um. So we need to look at, we need to look at what the, what the standard we want to use there is.
Well, a- and I think that the other thing, you know, the only places that someone would be likely to tempt, be tempted to go. With a really high pier is coastal harbor. Um, I mean, the, 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 the terrain in the outer harbor just doesn't get that much farther off. You know, unless you're trying to actually come in at, at ground level off your house. And go down. Um. But I think that that goes back to, there would be an argument for something that was. Fifteen feet of, off the water in the coastal harbor for protection, which it sort of goes back to. Inappropriate for the place. Um. You know, if you're, if you have to build a pier that's fifteen or twenty feet. Off the surface of the water. To keep it safe in all kinds of situations, you're not building a pier in a place that should have a residential pier, so.
Yeah. I will say, I have the one thing I didn't change, and it's not really in your standards. This is in the harbor. And Waterways ordinance is, is the length. Length of, you know, how far the flow can get out from the pier. Right?
Right.
I didn't change that and I haven't gone down that road yet.
And that puts, that puts severe limits on.
Does.
How high, because you, you get above a certain height and that ramp is vertical at low tide.
Right. Right. So maybe we just don't change it. They can't use it really, right?
High tide only. I mean, yeah, I think. And a- as we know, the, what we're working on around these numbers around mean high water is. Is a pretty, you know, so I, I thought that the Cape was interesting of doing. Astronomical high tide plus three feet. So if you say astronomical high tide, we can go to. January of this year, which was an astronomical twelve. Eleven and a half, twelve. Rather than the. NOAA Coast Guard mean high water, which we all know is a pretty antiquated number. Um, but my point there is like to put it, we know what the minimum baseline is. Max is gonna vary on certain projects.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not inclined to stick with the outdated numbers personally.
Well, I guess the, the number doesn't, does the number really matter if you're going? Allowing someone to go up, you know. Does it really matter if you're getting? I don't know, you're just measuring from a point, right? So it's about what that point gets you to. I don't know. That's what I was.
Well, i- i- if we're, if you're, if you're putting a minimum height in there as well, we still need to know what that minimum. You know, I mean, which. Again, when it's the access piece, you say. You know, does that mean that on a storm situation where it was. Twelve feet plus three feet of storm surge, someone should have been able to walk under that, under one of those beers as it was getting knocked off. It's. Yeah, so I mean, that's where I think, you know, making sure that we have the best. Max height is. If, if we're gonna.
You're arguing for a max height too, Chris, so?
No, I don't, I don't, I'm not worried about a max. No, I'm just saying, what is our, what is our maximum high watermark? No, no, if we're gonna say that you, you have to put access. Including stairs or the height of the pier based on high tide. What, what is? You know, there's a little wiggle room there.
Well, I think the, the aim is if anything is going to be built. That. Would survive, right? One of these storms and that's going to require a certain height. And that may then run afoul of other. Issues. But. We're providing, I think, a path that it's possible. Um, you know, but it, but it may not be likely, right, to, to build in, in, in the harbor. For me, I, I, I'm really focused and I, I think the, the height thing is important. Um, the, the VZ zone and, and, and the velocity zone there, I think that's a really critical area to be looking at and it may, as Jeremy said. Encompass a significant portion, if not all of the harbor, the inner, the outer and coastal harbor.
Does.
And, um. You know, there may be some sort of, as I think of the word you use, safe harbor or something like that in there. Um, there may be a spot or two where, where there, there's a sheltered spot. Um, but they still have a lot of other hurdles to get through. Um, I'm, I'm looking at Ben's chat right, right here. Do you want to speak for a second, Ben?
Sure.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, here I am. Yeah, I've, I've been, I looked at the reg, the proposed amendments, uh, this afternoon and. I, I think the non buoyancy part, the, the standards about construction. In my mind, that's got to encourage metal. Frames and mesh decks to make them non buoyant. That's, that makes a pier that's more resilient. To wave action than the present pier constructions. That leads me to think that the current. You know, the, the new height limits. Ten and, or eight and ten feet are good enough and, cause I would worry about, um. You know, though there's, Jeremy's pointed out several reasons why there wouldn't be overly high peers. But I just like to throw that in. Um, and if I can make another comment, I'm a little concerned. I like. The look of all these regulations. I've sat on the harbor committee for nearly twenty years and looked at a lot of this. I think these are great. Really applaud Jeremy's work here. Um, I'm a little concerned about. The harbor committee always considered, wanted to consider. Um, municipal commercial peers as a very separate opportunity for the town. And I hope, I see in the reg, sometimes it says new residential peers, sometimes just new peers. I'm a little concerned about limiting the town's. Ability to permit something we'd really like to do.
Yeah, and that's definitely, thank you, Ben. That's a great point and, and that, as, as I understand it, Jeremy will back me up, I think, on this, that this is really. If it's not written in there as such, it is addressing only residential peers.
Well.
Not, not any municipal peers.
Yeah, no, I had this conversation with someone else. Thank you, Ben, for the comments. Um. I tweaked and there was a couple of areas that I included residential and in other areas I just included peers. I, what I will do is I'll go through again to make sure. Um, that, um, that we're including residential peers in all the areas that are appropriate and. Not including commercial or municipal peers and others. Um, and I'll make sure that's clarified because you're right, I agree. You know, interesting, um. Eelgrass habitat, not that I'm one for destroying it or impacting it. But there is a lot of eelgrass habitat in Camden Harbor, a lot of it mapped, or at least in the mapped areas. We'll find out after DEP does their studies this summer and their surveys in Camden. Um, but there's a significant area of eelgrass in Sherman's Cove and over by the, um, the lift at Lyman Morse. Um, now going through permitting processes, there's a way to. Construct if you're doing a res, a commercial project or a municipal project, there's a way to construct peers. And other structures in eelgrass habitat. You do have to do mitigation. You actually have to go. Um, you know, um. Reseed other areas of eel, you know, that's for eelgrass. So I want to make sure that. Um, and I did that for the eelgrass piece and that's why it says for residential only, I think, on the eelgrass side. And I'll go back through and make sure it's covering our basis for municipal and other commercial peers.
Okay.
Makes sense. I do want to keep, I do want to keep the maintenance requirements and all that. Um, for.
Right.
Appears and, you know, not just residential.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I did, I just want to have a follow up too. Thanks, Jeremy, with Ben. Um, so your, your take is that the. If the, the type of construction that we're envisioning being. Uh, used to meet the standards that we're putting in would survive these types of storm events, even if they were at eight to ten feet? Or they would just, or would they just sink?
I'm, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah, I know, I just, but I.
But I'm picturing something.
Relying on your.
Yeah, I'm picturing something that's, you know, has much less water resistance because it's got to be built not to be able to float. It can't be built of wood, um, which is the typical, been the typical construction, what we saw floating around. The harbor two weeks ago. So it's a really different kind of pier. It's a. You know, less obnoxious in terms of viewshed. Um, and I think it takes water action better because it's, it's light, you know. Doesn't have much surface. That's my thought, but I'm not an engineer.
Okay.
And anyway, appreciate Jeremy's attention to the municipal. Aspect.
Yeah, I will say, I did, in talking with some engineers about what failed. Um, was the buoyancy of the, of the ramp or of the pier itself, some of the buoyant structures. That's what caused a lot of the failure is what I've been told. Um, and maybe Jim Bennett can speak to some of this. I think he's a marine engineer, but. Um, I do think that that's what I've been told is what caused that was the wave action. Um, the uplift that was happening, um, and creating those, you know, pier structures that were buoyant, made out of buoyant material. It caused that uplift and that's what caused the failure. I think that's what Ben was trying to say.
Yeah, and Jeremy, thank you. That's a great segue because I'm pretty sure Jim had his hand up and I, I did see it, so. I want to give him a chance to jump in.
Thank you. Um, yeah, and I'm on the harbor committee nowadays, but. Um, just to mention that, but the, uh. So the failures are really due to the dynamic. Uh, forces, the wave action, the pressure exerted by moving water. And buoyancy force does have an effect, but it's a second order compared to the dynamic force of wave pressures. And I, you know, and looking at these standards, the, the thing that concerns me the most from an engineering standpoint is. That number one, we get, we get the wave heights correct. Um, basically the storm run up. Uh, which, which pegs the upper limit of wave height. Is what is established by the Army Corps of Engineers in these different coastal flooding zones. And those numbers are based on. Predictions from a hundred years of. Hines data. Um, looking at how high do we think the waves can go? And I think it's really important to have that reference, what. Um, in these standards is what, what are we saying people need to use? What criteria are they measuring themselves against? Because if you don't have that settled. You're just gonna get into unending debates. Um, and the other thing is that we don't have a tide gauge in Camden Harbor. Um, and therefore we don't even know precisely what our tide history has been. So referencing. Local storm conditions in Camden Harbor as a basis for a standard right now is completely ambiguous. Um, and I've been, I've been doing on my own and with help from some others, attempts to measure. You know, the actual height of tide in these storms. Um, the highest I've seen so far was Storm on the thirteenth. Um, where we're about fifteen point three feet of. Um, calm water height. Um, that would be the mean of the height of the waves. And we saw about three feet of, uh, half amplitude, so six foot waves. Were coming across the harbor. So you add. Three feet to that fifteen feet, we're up at eighteen feet as a, uh. As, as the top of our wave crests. And that was pretty much borne out by the fact that, you know, it tore the siding off the south side of the yacht club. Um, so. You know, we, we need to be, if we aren't somewhat precise and nailing down these, these hard criteria, then we're just gonna spend. An unending amount of time trying to debate, I think, as Allison was saying, with engineers and consultants and blah, blah, blah. So we have to try to make this thing as prescriptive as we can. Um, that would be my advice and as a member of the harbor committee, I have absolutely happy to work on this more, but. Um, right now what I see is a lack of hard criteria.
Um, Jim, can I read the definition of mean high water from, and this is from the harbor ordinance?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, mean high water and this is what we're measuring the height of those peers and it's from the harbor ordinance. Um, average height of, average height of high water over a nineteen year period as defined by NOAA.
Okay, but that's fine.
I mean, I'm just, I, I'm just.
Yeah.
What is that?
That's what we're working with right now.
Yeah, but so my point is that. NOAA doesn't define a mean high water for Camden Harbor. It only defines mean high water at the two stations where they have tide gauges. One of them being in Portland, the other one being in Bar Harbor. And everything in between is, uh, you know, is, is something that they publish. But, um, going back nineteen years, um, if you look at the records, even in the last two years. Of the actual tides versus the forecast tides. You will see there's significant difference. NOAA has started to publish the fact that their historical tide data is no longer can be. Cause of these differences. So I think it bears some further consideration and I do know that the Army Corps. Is, is using the NOAA data to establish their. Um, their heights for the different flood zones. And there, I, I think it'd be prudent to use the Army Corps. Um, data as opposed to NOAA because the Army Corps is what's. Actually, you know, dictating what happens at shore as well as what's happened. In the harbor.
When you refer to Army Corps data, what, what is, what is that? What is that called?
I'm referring to the Army Corps. Um, flood level definitions for the different flood zones.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
All right, that's helpful. You know, I think what would be very helpful is, and on the fifteenth, um, Pete Slavinsky is coming in.
Yeah, I saw that.
And I think he would be, and I, I've already kind of asked him and kind of this discussion, because he helped the town of Cape Elizabeth. Deal with how they were going, and that's where the hat plus three. Uh, came from that Cape Elizabeth is using that and Pete Slavinsky spent a lot of time down there, um, researching and doing a lot of studies. Um, but so I think he could give us some good guidance on. On what maybe how we get there. Jim, just my thinking and, and maybe what, maybe what I can do Ethan, just to. Clean this up is maybe chat with Pete and maybe Jim a little bit, um, and then, and then, and then draft something. Um, and maybe give you a couple of options and kind of. And I'll detail how we got to or whatever, you know, whatever that is. I think that might be helpful for you. Um, trying to get this to public hearing, um, for, um. You know, um, for June or for, to get the voters to June, we need to do a public hearing on February twenty ninth. So, and I, we have to do length, we have to do, um. Notice and all that. I think it's thirteen days ahead of that meeting is when that notice needs to go out. And I have to have draft, I have to have the language for the most part all buttoned down by. Um, that day when it's, when it appears in the, in the public notice, um, that there's. You know, that is, and I have to reference, it's available in the town office. So what I guess I'll do is I'll draft something, um. And I won't be able to have that. Is that thirteen days? One, two, three. Oh, we could almost make that decision with Pete Slavinsky on the fifteenth gets us to the twenty ninth perfectly. Um, so.
Fill, fill in the blank.
Yeah, why don't we just fill in the blank?
Yeah, and, and, and what if we had something like the. I mean, I, I agree with Jim that we want the best possible data and we want specificity as we can get. What are we talking about? The cost of like municipal tide gauges, like something in Camden Harbor if you. Is it a several thousand dollars? Is it a hundred thousand dollars? I have no idea.
It's not a hundred thousand, but I, I actually sent Jeremy some information about a year ago. On, um, on some commercially available. Devices. I, I think it's about two grand and then you'd have to pay to mount it somewhere, which is gonna be a cost, but.
Yeah. Seems like if we're doing this whole waterfront approach that we're looking at, that would be a worthwhile investment for the city or the town.
Yeah, get Lyman Morse to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm meeting with Audrey next week on budget stuff, so maybe I'll, um, I'll do that. Maybe I'll chat with Drew as well over at Lyman Morse.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, Drew would, would approve of that because they used to have a tide gauge over there. At Lyman Morse, but it got torn off their pier in one of those storms and, um, they, they use it and they use a board now. You know, because they have to have the tide measurement for.
Yeah, they need to know, so it's a, yeah.
Yeah, but it's stick nailed.
That, that's good stuff, Jim. I appreciate it. Um, and thank you, Jeremy, for your response. Um, anybody else from the board, um. Have any input on the. On the peer language? Or the criteria?
Yeah, my, my. My only question was about if we, or to do anything with. Permitting for repairs. Uh, and limitation on storm damage after. You know, we talked, I had talked about if a pier is, if more than fifty percent of a pier is damaged, it actually has to go. Back through permitting process. It's not just a repair.
Yeah. Um. Any thoughts on that? I could make a provision in there. I mean, I guess, I mean, I'll chat with Bill on this a little bit. I mean, because these are technically. Uh, you know, I, I just thinking about if you do a prohibition on something or something is standard, we would never be doing a prohibition. But if you create new standards, um, and something fails, those things are generally grandfathered, right? Uh, but I want to make sure that. Um, that they. Yeah. I have to figure out how best to handle that.
I just, I, the, the basis, I think that, that it was interesting is that in the dune. In the dune language. There in the, in the laws around sand dunes, there's, there are provisions that say if a structure is within those zones, if it gets destroyed or damaged, it can be rebuilt once. But not more than once and it still has to go through. Through permitting and meet and, you know, and we had this conversation with the. The old Miller pier that can be rebuilt exactly as it was, which defeats the purpose of. You know, so if all these peers that are destroyed can be rebuilt. Uh, you know. And I know that we changed the height to be retroactive, but. If we're not putting the resiliency structures, then, you know, as much what we're talking about is, is existing structure, so. They would be. Good to have something in there.
Yep. Um, Bill and I will probably, will chat, um, and work on that.
Thanks.
See what we can do. See what we can do.
But otherwise, I'd say let's go ahead and schedule a hearing for this on the twenty ninth.
All right.
I support Chris O's comments about of fifty percent structured uh destruction triggering a requirement that it be built to the new standards, just, just.
And new process? And and review process? Or no, new standards?
I guess I don't have an opinion on that. Uh, to to continue with my thought, though, if I trace the evolution of the board's center on this, there was a time when the majority of the board was interested in prohibiting new peers. Am I correct in that recollection? Okay, great. Um, and so tonight, excuse me, tonight, that sort of creeped back in in the guise of uh the VE zone, that perhaps while we couldn't prohibit all peers, we could prohibit peers in the VE zone. Did I, did I hear that correctly?
Um, I think it's doable. I think we need to have provisions and similarly to the provision where, uh, and this is just me, maybe Bill can comment after. You know, like these maps that we're relying on, we're kind of saying, you've got to actually, you know, there might be significant wildlife habitat that's mapped. Uh, but then when it's, when an entity, it's, and biologists goes out and studies it, they say, oh, it actually doesn't meet that standard, right? It gives them a kind of out from that prohibition. Um, and what I was thinking about this piece um was actually that, and that's why I included the provision about safe harbor. Um, it only can be in the if you're in a safe harbor area or an area that you can safely moor your boat. Falmouth, Mass. did have that other provision that had um like Allison mentioned um about a um oh, about if it's in the VE zone, it also has to provide a public benefit.
Yeah, I was interested in that.
I'm not sure that's doable or what, but Bill, uh, Bill Kelly and I can dig into that.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a question possibly looking at that versus the the right to wharf out and and whether they are in conflict possibly. But the the public benefit requirement is is certainly, it 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 was, it it held, held up down there.
So to finish my thought, you know, I'm, I might be supportive with the escape clauses, Jeremy, that you mentioned to uh float the, the prohibition in the VE zone. Uh, I worry that um, you know, given a motivated property owner with enough resources, that the new standards and the new height requirements, you know, could offer up a real monstrosity of structure, uh, you know, that that were inadvertently leading, leading property owners to propose. And that uh um, you know, we're, we'd be hanging our hats on denying some of these on an aesthetics basis, which um would not be as easy as as uh, you know, if if the, if, it would not be as easy as a a a more strict standard that they're not meeting. So I'll be supportive of taking this to the to the select board and then on to a vote, but uh if I were to make kind of a final comment, it's uh, you know, I I think if if our intent really is to make these things more difficult to uh permit for all the right reasons that that i- if we're allowed to restrict them outright in the VE zone with some exceptions, that that might be an easier way to go. Thank you.
I would, I would go along. I would go along with that, John, also as far as just restriction period in the uh, they call it the velocity zone, is that right?
Yeah.
Um, yeah. That's, I mean, that would be my first choice, let's say, to do that from that approach.
Okay, so from my perspective, we'd include that. I mean, we'll include some language on that, but everything else stays in. Um, and and we just move forward. I just want to remind you to remember, um, they also have to re, remember, they got to prove that there's no other, they can't do land attached float, they can't do the haul out, they can't have a mooring with a haul out. There's a lot of, they can't use the 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 yacht club or they can't use Lyman Morse, that's just not reasonable, it doesn't work. Um, they have to prove all that first, and then they've got to go through this whole process, so. Just pointing that out.
It's clearly prohibitive anyway, right? Yeah, it it definitely is.
Yeah.
Okay. Want to schedule a hearing for this on the twenty ninth? Does that work for everyone? Make a motion in a second and go?
I make a motion that we schedule a hearing, public hearing for this pier ordinance amendments on the twenty ninth of February.
Thank you.
May I have a second?
A second up.
Okay, I got a second from Pat. Uh, John?
Uh, I'll uh vote yes on that with the comment that uh it would be helpful for Jeremy to sort of chase down some of those uh Army Corps tide heights in the interim.
Yep, okay. Pat? In favor?
Of a hearing?
Of the hearing. I could just do sort of a general show of hands on this one, I think. I don't think I need to do. Raise your hand there, okay? And is Matt here? I saw him on the, there's a hand going up. Yep, Matt, Matt, gotcha. Okay, yep, so we have a hearing scheduled on the the pier uh ordinance amendments for uh February twenty ninth at five P M.
In person.
And we'll have a lot of that info for, on that, out of that meeting on the fifteenth that we can.
Right. We'll bring that all together. Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you again, Jeremy, for all the work on this. It is a very thorough job, and it it is of heightened importance, given what we've seen over the past few weeks, so appreciate all the work that you and the rest of the staff do.
Thank you.
Um, that'll move us on then to the next item on the agenda, which is um the workshop on short term rentals. And um we've had numerous workshops and drafts, and they've been circulated and um revised and edited and sent back, and Shenley's done a great job putting all that together. So um, does anybody have a place where they want to start with this? Jeremy, again, okay?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, and then maybe I'll let Shenley explain it, but um I'll I'll briefly do it. Um, just to keep everything in perspective and what the process is for this, um for people that are watching or here, um, the short term rentals are regulated in chapter two fifteen. Um, that's our current short term registration code. It's chapter two fifteen of our Code of Ordinances. Um, that's, that's the meat of all of this is in chapter two fifteen. Um, what you guys are need to schedule a hearing for is chapter two ninety, and that is the definitions um and the uses and where they'll go and be allowed. Um, again, the meat of everything, the process, what you need to submit for a light application, um, whether or not there's a cap and all that stuff, that's in chapter two fifteen, not in chapter two ninety. Um, so what we're here to really talk about today is chapter two ninety, because we need to schedule a public hearing on that. You guys don't do a public hearing on chapter two fifteen, that goes to the select board. So Shenley and I are going to be finalizing two fifteen based on everything that you guys have done. Um, and then we will present that to the select board, um and I'm gonna need Ethan and some of you probably to um help that process at the select board level. Um, I will certainly be there and kind of lead that, but I'd like you guys to participate in that. Um, that will go to the select board for a discussion, kind of a a summary of where things are, and then they'll schedule a public hearing. Their hearings don't have to happen as quickly as ours do in February in order to get to June. Um, because again, you have to have a hearing and then they do it. So we'll get that probably in late March would be my guess. Um, early April, a a hearing to them. Um, so Shenley will go through the two ninety changes, and again, those are just definitions um and uses. Um, one thing I do will need to know moving forward, um so Shenley and I can do our work, um you guys spent a lot of time doing all this, um is the cap piece, and that's something that I I, you know, would like you guys to come out of this maybe today to give us some direction on where you are with a cap, if you're in a cap, you don't want a cap. Um, and I want to just clarify for everyone out there, the cap piece that has been discussed is capping, potentially capping, and it, no, I don't think the board's unanimous on this. I don't know where everyone stands on it. Um, that it would only apply to um those that are commercial, what are we're calling commercial short term rent, commercial short term rentals. And those are the ones that it's not someone's primary residence, it's not a seasonally restricted cottage, because there's been no discussion about capping those. Um, there's just been a discussion about capping the other ones. Um, and I provided you today, um Shenley and I, I know I said we're gonna get some information up on the town website on short term rentals. We are almost there on getting everything up onto the website, um and it's just, we've got a lot going on, but that's going to get up there, um likely as soon as, maybe tomorrow or early next week, we'll get that stuff up on the town's website. Um, we've shared it with Janice, who does the web stuff. Um, we're just kind of finalizing how it's gonna be presented and what's gonna be included. Um, but I did share with you today, and I'll put it, we'll we'll include it, um, is information that we got from Air DNA. Air DNA, and we were talking about data and numbers. Um, Air DNA um looks at just um Air Airbnb and Verbo. Um, their numbers are a little different than Granicus's numbers. I mean, I I guess more than a little. Um, but Granicus is trying to provide us a little more clarity on how their numbers are um have come, you know, where where they come from. They do say that they monitor forty some or seventy some online platforms um where Air DNA just looks at Verbo and Air Airbnb. Um, but I will include all that information up on the website too, so everyone has it. Um, and just to clarify, since we will need to talk about numbers here, um, remember Granicus was at like four hundred. Um, then information I sent to you folks today on Air DNA, I think it talked about um two hundred and fifteen or two ten or two twenty in that that ballpark. Um, I'm just, I just, I just wanted you to know that that's where the numbers that were.
Yeah, and and Jeremy, I did take a look at some of the the Air DNA stuff, and I just want to point out um that their numbers peaked at two seventy five in June.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, so it's, it's, I don't like even, you know, and and, you know, you can say they're two hundred and ten currently available, but that's like, you know, first of all, they're only, I don't know how these are done, and we that we need a lot more information on what they're looking at. Are they looking at what is available to rent right now or what is actually, you know?
Yeah, I I will get that.
There's way too much information that's missing for me to rely on any of these numbers, but I'm comfortable still just holding from a discussion standpoint that there are somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty to four hundred short term rentals and use that as a basis for the planning board's discussion. Um, and 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 not get too bogged down in the details of who says what, because I think that there's way too much nuance in these numbers.
Okay, helpful, thank you. Shenley, do you want to just go through what what um we've got, and no need to share them, I think you can just explain, define what um like, read out definitions and go through that.
Well, yeah, I I did have.
Yeah, we've all, we've all got the memos, so it's, we should have it up in front of us.
Okay, do you, did you see the yellow highlighting on the text?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's the only thing that's, that's kind of stands out that maybe you all want to finalize uh before we move forward, but the the two main things for tonight is, is that we just get that accessory apartment definition um finalized, because that does have to go to voters in June. And that's, we decided to, what changes since the last time we met with you is we decided to keep um accessory apartment and keep that term. And it's consistent throughout the code, and that is actually the same thing as an accessory dwelling unit, it's no different. And then we just tweaked the actual definition of accessory apartment to make sure it meets all the criteria in the state uh for definition of um accessory dwelling unit. So it's the same thing essentially. We've, we have a maximum size square feet on it, and um we changed A and B under there a little bit, and I I think you, Ethan, I think you helped me clean up the the B definition, so we incorporated uh your comments since the last plan board uh workshop. And so that's pretty much final, you know, as 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 close as it's gonna get for now, unless you all have any other comments on accessory apartment on that definition, um that's what we plan to go with, if that works for you all.
Looks good to me.
If anybody has any comments, okay.
I have a question on um the zones where you guys are allowing stuff. Um, one of the zones wasn't included, and maybe rightly so, it's a um B T H zone. Uh, when I'm looking at the different uh areas that you were saying uh where these residential, short term or seasonal, short term or commercial, short term is allowed. So B T H wasn't there, and when I look at B T H on um the map, it looks like it's the uh strip of stores down on Bayview Street, and are those deliberately left out because they don't have any type of short term rental space in them?
They are, well, let me see here.
I'm looking too.
Yeah.
And I just, I'm looking at the um, the one thing Ethan marked up uh for the different districts that we are saying things are allowed.
Oh, I think, yeah, the end of it, yeah. I guess it's, let me.
Is that just an error? I mean, just a.
I didn't put that one section in, but we, I mean, we're gonna have to do the whole code, but this is basically, just so you all can see, it's gonna go in every single district that it's, that it's allowed, right? But yeah, thank you for catching that. And we'll take a double look and see.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at B T H right now, and it allows obviously single family dwellings, there's some provisions, and it allows two family and multifamily, so what we'll do is we'll just, I think it was a Scrivner's error, Pat, it was just one of those, just an oversight on on that district, so thank you.
And obviously, it's not an industrial
Right.
or natural resources. So, um, okay, so yeah, so if you guys are, the A D U definition, that's great. Um, and can you see we had one more change to the terms of short term rental? We decided to go with residential so far. Uh, residential, short term rental, instead of, it used to be the old accessory uh short term rental, because we have the three types of residential, the seasonal and the commercial. So we just left it like that and writing the ordinance, it's, you know, it was a little bit redundant having accessory twice for two different meanings in the same sentence. It was, it was getting confusing, so.
Yeah, we we had a nu, we had numerous uh mutations of this over time, so. And 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 some even kept resurfacing and and old ones were resurfacing and stuff like that, but what we really have, it was accessory to residential is what we were using originally. And we just felt like that accessory is too confusing um when it, when you start looking at accessory apartments, and then you're looking at accessory, short term rental. And so really what's more important is that there's a residential aspect to the property that somebody's living on it.
Right.
Um, and that's, that I think is much clearer for the voters to understand.
And um we did, the little added extra part underneath ex, uh residential is the option of um allowing a short term rental on an abutting property. If the primary resident resides on one lot and the directly adjacent, abutting, sharing the same side property line, if they had a short term rental in that lot, that's for you all to decide, obviously, but we put that in there just in case you wanted any discussion on it or.
Um, I was in support of that, and I think one of the reasons being is I think it's probably a very low occurrence rate in our town that that curdale.
Okay.
Um, I start, I mean, myself, I was okay with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I come in on the other side of it. I agree with Pat that it is a low occurrence rate. Um, but I also feel um that those properties are exactly the type of properties that we're probably targeting to put into the back into the market. And so, um, you know, that's, that's, I I I, that, my, my feeling on that one is um that that idea came, I know that, I think it's capable. I know that, I think it's Cape Elizabeth has this one. And I think, I think Cape Elizabeth was. Much more concerned with the quality, the character of their neighborhood. I mean, not that we're not in here in Camden, but. Um. That that, they were more concerned with that feature factor. Um, than anything else, and so that was the reason why they made carved out that exception, um. So, you know, I I'm not going to die on this hill. If the board has the thing, it's not going to get my vote to put that in. Um, but but I, you know, I would, I would rather see. That property treated just the same as the other properties for the other reasons that we have in the ordinance. Not just the fact that there's someone to monitor the site. So that's my position on it.
Okay, I would agree with Ethan on that one.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's everybody have a, let's everybody have a say, that's not a vote.
Yeah, it it's a little bit of a close call to me. Uh, it's a part of it, the idea of having a. A resident with eyes on the property, it's the same as uh. You know, having uh. Having it uh, be uh, an accessory dwelling unit to me. But I get Ethan's point about uh, the housing component, so I I'm not. Strong either way, but um. Now, if if I had to be forced to vote one way or another. Tonight, I'd probably. Vote to keep that language in there as you've proposed.
Hey.
Okay, and we have um, Matt here too. Matt, are you? Available to chime in on that one?
I guess I was, I was slow on the mute button there. What was that?
We are looking at the part of the. Definition under residential short-term rental, which is highlighted in yellow. Um, regarding the abutting property, have you looked at that one?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm good with whatever you decide.
We, we're in a, we're in a situation where we have a divided board. And so I'm not saying you're casting the the tie-breaking vote. But you're pretty close to that, so um, I've spoken against it. And Pat has spoken for it. John is on the fence, but said gun to his head, he may be supportive. Lucia and Chris O have said, uh, they they're uh, opposed to it.
Okay, um, look, I'm for, I'm for simpler definitions. So I, you know, last definition, that was my original. Note on here, I don't have it in front of me, the the highlighted one.
Shenley, can you share your screen by chance?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks, Shenley. Sorry about that.
No problem.
And I, I, Ethan, I just want to point out too, I mean, you're right, I think it was Falmouth maybe that came up with this or Cape Elizabeth, I don't remember, um. We also had there, right, we have. We've heard the comment from local folks too, just sharing that, um, a gentleman on Belmont, right? Um, that own the property.
Right, right.
I just wanted to point it out that the comments, this provision was. Um, you know, I I I guess what I want to point out is, is that throughout this process, when the public started making comments eventually on this whole process. We have taken some of, we've taken some of this stuff into consideration and tweaked things.
Oh, absolutely. I think, yeah, I think that's why this has survived, yeah.
Here's my point, yep.
So it's, I'm sorry, the the question for me is, should this, should this be present? In the definition?
Yeah, should we leave it in or take it out?
This portion.
The big question is, should we allow? A person who's the full-time owner to basically. Have a second. Short-term rent on an abutting property. Yeah, I I'm fine with that.
Okay, we got three and three.
Okay. Yeah. So that's, you know, that's something that I guess we'll uh.
Well, we can, we can, we can table that to the hearing too.
That's true, yeah, we can, we can all think on it and reconsider at the hearing.
I I'm just looking. I'm just looking at the clock here, we're two hours in. And Ethan, you didn't, you didn't catch this, but I'm actually six hours ahead of you on the time zone. Well. So you must be ready to get up. Um. Yeah, so we really don't, I don't think there's a whole lot more on here. Is there, Shenley?
No, that's it, that's pretty much it. There's a couple, we're going to add um, uh, the actual definition of short-term rental into this. In chapter two ninety, the zoning ordinance, which you're looking at, and we're also going to add um. Something else.
Transient guests.
Yeah, transient occupants, that's, that's the bond, and we're going to put that in there because it's transient is in there, so yeah.
Showing your screen for me for a second now?
Turn it off, yes.
Yeah. Um, I think I, I I believe I heard Jeremy's expressed it, um, he would, that they are looking for a little bit of guidance. On whether this board supports a cap on the commercial short-term rentals only. And if so, if we could give some guidance as to the number, we don't get to say that. Number in the end, um, that's a select board purview, but we would be giving a recommendation to the select board. As to what we think that number should be. Um, I'll go ahead and say I think the number should be one-fifty. And put that out there. Um, we're looking at a a range between, I think, you know, we're just looking at the numbers, around two-seventy-five to four-hundred.
Clarification, Ethan is. Is that commercial?
Just the commercial, yeah.
Yeah, we don't know how many commercial exactly there are. And this number can always be adjusted by the select board down the road. I mean, they may not even want to cap at all. We don't know what their, their uh. Feeling is on this. So it's really just a, a planning board recommendation.
Yeah.
What we think, we, where we should start with our, i- if we want to cap and where we should start with it.
So, yeah, I I've got a quick comment about that, um. I mean, I, I agree with you, Ethan, I think we should cap it and we should start low, um, because we can always raise it. But we can't bring it down. Um.
I mean, you can bring it down, but it might be harder.
Yeah, um, looking at the information that was sent via the um. Uh. Oh, I can't remember the name of the group now that we, we just got the PowerPoint from. Air, yeah. So, um, looking at that information, fifty percent, it looks like fifty percent are one bedrooms, which. You know, is a bit concerning to me, but it looks like from that study that fifty percent of these are one bedrooms, which are probably not commercial. They're the um, they're the people renting a room out of their house, owner occupied more than likely. So if you, if you look at that, if they came up with two hundred and ten. Um, and and we're assuming that they don't have the full figure, but it, two hundred and ten. Um. Is their number, fifty percent of that is one hundred, which means that you. If they're correct, you've only got a hundred people in the more commercial. Um, or whole house, you know, so probably even less than that of whole houses. So I would be. I would be in favor of even doing a lower number if we're just lowering the number for, or if we're just capping the number for commercial.
Right, and so that's an interesting point. I I guess the first thing I would say, Lucia, is that. Rather than use the two-ten number, I think we're discussing using the two-seventy-five because that's the peak in June. And I think it's much more helpful than a snapshot in time to use the peak. Um, and and that may, you're right, that may include um. Non, there there certainly are are some non-commercial in there, but I I wouldn't say that that necessarily means they're not commercial.
The one bedrooms?
Yeah, I mean, they could be, they, some of them, some of them can be hotel rooms, there definitely are single standalone cottages.
There are a lot of like one-bedroom and studio apartments in Airbnb. Models, so I I mean, and and again, that that data is, as we've said, we've got two very different sets of data that. It's the, the really challenging thing is until we actually register them. In Camden, that's when we're going to actually know how many we have. Like.
Right.
You know, we're, we're making estimates and guestimates, so.
Guessing, yeah.
Well, and chances are, many of them won't register, so we'll probably have even more. Um, but I would, I would still be in favor of a lower cap.
Okay, yeah, that's heard.
You know, one of the things, weren't we going to also discuss the length of time for licenses? I thought that was one of the follows, follow-ups we had.
That, that's in two fifty, that's in the, the select board stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's in two fifteen and I just want to just touch base on that. I mean, I've talked to. Um, owners of short-term rentals and some property managers of short-term rentals. Um. And that, yeah, it it's far more nuanced than giving someone a year, right? There's a whole heck of a lot that goes into this, so.
Yeah.
Um, that's something that I think we're, Shenley and I are really, we're going to nail down. Um, but I'm looking at if we're going to um, into. Cap like this or, I mean, we're looking at like. I think it's really like a three-year thing, um, you got to license it annually, um, but that. You you get three years because um, you're trying to, trying to manage it and rent space and, you know. Doesn't work and. Um, i- if in one year, so I think a three-year and I've heard positive things from people when I said three years, um. When, when this issue came up and these are, these are owners and not, I've heard more positive information on that piece from owners. Of short-term renters than I have from um, property managers. I've heard that from the actual owners.
Yeah.
Managers too.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it removes a bit of the helter-skelter feeling of the whole thing, which I I think is, is helpful.
The unpredictability is, is.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Lucia?
Yeah, I've got a quick question. If that's true for commercial, does that also apply to inns? No.
No, it wouldn't apply to license, it wouldn't apply to license our existing licensed um, entities like the Bed and Breakfast in Anaheim Hotel.
But, but there aren't the same kind of limits and lotteries for, you know. When you're going for your in-license, you're, unless you've done something wrong, you're pretty certain to. To get it, where there's a limited number of licenses, if we're putting a ban on that. That's where some of the unpredictability was being thrown out.
Sure, sure.
Right, if you say, okay, there's a hundred licenses and every year it's a lottery. I don't know if I'm going to get my license for next year, how do I? How do I have bookings?
Yeah.
Where people are booking these things, a lot of the, you know, a lot of these properties have people who. Booked the same cottage year in, year out and they've booked. Four or five years out, every, every summer.
Sure, so are, are we, are we sure that we're doing some kind of a lottery or cap? Or are we just still discussing it?
We are discussing that right now, yeah.
But the lottery, the lottery, the. Length of license, all of that is under two fifteen, which is what the select board will.
Right.
Will do. And again, that's, that's what Jeremy's saying, it's great if we want to go, some of the select board go or or planning board go to the select board meeting and and and. Fill them in on what the planning board, so I intend to make that if I can. Um, and and fill them in on what the planning board has talked about and discussed. Um, and where our, where our hearts lie, but but um, again, that's select board purview. Um, at the, at the, at the advisement of the, of the planning board. So, uh, we're just still here on a number, so go ahead, Pat.
Um, I may side with Lucia as far as putting an initial lower number uh, down. Versus the, I think you said one-fifty.
One-fifty, yeah.
I just, yeah, I just took one that we had talked about in prior sessions, but I'm, I'm listening to everybody's input. John?
Um, you know, I haven't had the chance to look at Air DNA's materials yet. Um, so I reserve the right to. Change my opinion a little bit, but I think uh, the one-fifty number is sound in my mind. Uh, for setting a cap on commercial rentals. Uh, and um, uh, I, I think it should apply to commercial only. And I am also supportive of uh. That three-year proposal that. Jeremy was. Starting to reference.
Okay.
And I'll add, add in that. I still think we ought to give. The law-abiding citizens. Uh, of. Ability to go to the front of the line in uh, lottery.
Yeah, I think I agree with that and thanks for bringing that up. I think we've all agreed to that one. Um, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads on that. Uh, those that have already registered, um. So, Chris O?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I I go back and forth on the cap, I. But I'm, I'm okay with the hundred and fifty. Um. I, I do will have the caveat that. I know it's the, the, it's the issue that puts everybody's. Hackles up and gets everybody the most. Fired up whenever all these discussions, no matter how many times we say we're only talking about this one group. And it's a potential cap, everybody hears differently, and so I just, I don't want it to be. The hill we die on to lose all the other. All the other things that everyone agrees we should do. Uh, in terms of how health safety and all those things, um. You know, and again, that's, that won't be our call anyway, but.
All right, that's helpful.
Right.
Matt Wolf had it.
Yeah, I was just calling on Matt.
Yeah, thanks, um, my, uh, I am less uh, in the camp of like, is it one-fifty, is it two-hundred, is it one-hundred? I'll, I'll defer to the group, I think on that one, or I'll abstain from having a real opinion there. My question, I guess, and maybe this is uh, uh. Ethan, you can tell me if this is something that's not possible at this stage. Uh, my, my concern is more about the concentration of them, right? Like. A broad cap, that's why I'm less concerned, it's more like. What if you have a concentration of them in one area of town, so to speak? And so I was, my original suggestion and and what I'm wondering now is, can we wait? To vote on that number specifically or any sort of determination on. How the, uh, a cap, if a cap was in place would be structured until we. Receive those, until people fill out their initial registrations and then we're able to get a true understanding of. Where. The requests for rentals are and if there is a concentration of them that is, is a concern.
That goes to neighborhood, right, your intent?
Yeah, and I I would, I I think that's an interesting point, I I like the, the, the concept. Um, it addresses certain parts of our, our. Goals and 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 um. Motivation, right? It, it, the, 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 the destruction of the neighborhood, preservation of the Camden neighborhoods, the residential neighborhoods and things like that. Um, I think the counter to that would still be that, um. There's also the, the goal of of alleviating the lack of available housing. Across the town as a whole. And, you know, that's, that's where a lot of the motivation comes from for um, considering that.
I, I present this less of a housing stock consideration. And more of a future-looking risk consideration.
Right, like, we could always tweak it, yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, like, what if we have it, what if we see there's just going to be an area of town that's just going to be all rentals? It's just going to be all transient residents and like a concentrated area, is that a concern? I mean.
But you're talking about maybe as some threshold, like later on, if we, if we start permitting short-term rentals and we look and we go, okay, this area of the, of, of the town is. Is just, it's being wiped out with, with, you know, it's losing its neighborhood character, it's short-term rental, it's transient. We can put a threshold, we can maybe do some thresholds and use GIS and use census data and look at the neighbor, sections of town. And maybe put a, a threshold on that, like, we can go, you know, looking back if we're. I mean, looking for. Does that make sense?
Any, any, any more data that we can get is great. And and, and Matt, I, I think it's, it's, it's absolutely fine if you want to. Um, make a suggestion like this to the select board, because again, this would be in their purview. Um, but, but I think, you know, it, it's, it's sort of complicating, confusing the discussion on the cap itself. So you may or may not be in favor of, of deciding on a cap now, or you may just abstain, that's fine. Um, but I, I think it's, it's not really the same discussion that we're having. Um, but it is an alternative to the discussion that we're having and and so that might sway other opinions. Um, and that's, and that's fine, but I don't think that at this stage of the game. You know, the, the, it, the, the thing that I think that is a way to possibly look at it. Is to say. When we have this data. When people do file an application. That will give the select board information that they can then use to decide whether or not they think the cap at one-fifty is good. Or whatever number we choose and whether they want to adjust it in future years.
Yes, the only thing that it does, I'm, I'm with you, I'm not, this is not a hill, I'm just presenting this is because I'm like. Interested in the information to make a decision on that. Um, is, I forget who mentioned it just now, I think it was Lucia, uh. That if we, it, it would incent, if we do it that way, I would be more. Inclined to vote for like the lowest cap you present, because it will be easier to move the cap higher. If we discover that we can, then it will be to move it back. if we discover that we can, than it will be to move it backwards from, let's say, two hundred or something like that.
Right, right. The thing I would just add is, you know, I mean, just two comments. One, we have winter dark neighborhoods and we don't really know, and I, and we're not, it's gonna be wild till we'll know how many of those are just summer people who aren't here six months? And how many of those are Airbnbs? But the piece that I go back to is the best way for us to get data on how many short-term rentals we have in town is going to be to enact regulations. That, you know, I think somebody said, well, they, that some of them may not register, but the fact is by creating this, we've, we've ramped up the teeth of it. That means they will all have to register, and then we'll actually know how many we have and where they are. It's gonna take a few years, but that's the moment that we're actually gonna know how many we have.
Yeah, I, I will say, I mean, I, I kind of, I mean, I've always looked at codes and ordinances as, um, more living documents than something that should be set in stone, because things change so much in a community, so. I do like having a, a provision to, this is really a select board thing, but I think you could, when you go to them and chat with them about what you recommend and why you're recommending certain things, you could bring these kind of, this, this kind of point up, and I think that's a very valid thing for the town to, after we get, so, you know, if they're valid for three years and you're in, and there's a cap, and the select board goes with a cap, for instance, and it's three years, we're gonna know, you know, we're gonna get a lot of information right off the bat, and we'll be able to then assess that, okay. You know, these hundred, hundred or whatever they are, they're scattered all over town. Um, or they're concentrated in one area. Um, and then we can really look at then, how should we dress that type of issue?
Exactly.
And I, and I agree with that, and I also just wanna point out, and, and, and I know not everybody has a chance to see the, the air DNA since it was recently sent out, but we're looking at, at data that's showing from December of twenty twenty to, um, June of twenty twenty-three, the, the number of SDRs in town has more than doubled. That is not a long period of time in, in a general real estate housing market period of time. And so, this is the, one of the, the concerns, and if that chart were to continue to trend upwards, like, it looks like it is, and people are incentivized to continue to buy property to put it into the short-term rental market, we're looking at a much more exacerbated, greater exacerbation of current problems that we already have. So that's why I, I, I do agree with, you know, the idea of, of starting lower. And as, and it was the grandest, grandest guy who said it, it's easier to give something, give something back than to take it away. Right, it's, it's hard.
It's, it's true, but I, I do think that, you know, if we, I think that the, the converse is true, that if we do go through the registration and suddenly it looks like an actual fact, there's two hundred and fifty, and then we can actually pinpoint it and come, you know, circle back with the town and say, wow, look, we actually do have three hundred and fifty houses. But again, I, I'm just a big tired and grumpy boy here and say it's now quarter past seven for you. Talk about the other item.
Can I just, that's one more thing. People, people with primary dwellings, if they have a couple of apartments attached to their home as a primary dwelling, could they be grandfathered in somehow? Let's say they have more than, um, a one unit. So they've got maybe two or three apartments. Could they be grandfathered in to keep those apartments?
You mean if they're short-term rental apartments, or you just mean it's a multi-family dwelling? It's like three, three on one lot?
There would be, one unit is the homeowner's primary dwelling. So they would be living there, you know, um.
So like, if it's a three, if it's a three-unit building, and I live in the ground floor and I rent the other two units?
Right, right. And, you know, again, I'm thinking that this this might not be a common occurrence or a, a, a big number in our town. So that's why I was wondering if we could maybe grandfather these types of scenarios in.
I thought, I thought we had them already in a residential because there's a primary residence on the, on the lot.
You do.
The only, the only difference here, Pat, and I think this might be where you're going, but I'm not sure. Is that we, when we were talking back about accessory dwelling units, which we're calling accessory apartments again now in the code. We had discussions over when we changed those to being not allowed to be in the short-term rental market. And we thought it was like in two thousand nineteen. And it turns out it was in like nineteen ninety-seven. And so, we were going to grandfather a fair significant, a fairly significant number of them into short-term rental, you know, eligibility. But once we realized that they have been operating illegally since nineteen ninety-seven, if they've been operating that way, and not just the ones that were permitted since two thousand nineteen, it takes, it takes a little bit different stamp viewpoint on it, right? And it says, well, th- these people were doing something that was not permitted. Um, and that's the whole point of all of these things is that unless they've done the, unless they're in that fifteen percent, or maybe it's gone up a little bit since these, these meetings have started. If, unless they're in that fifteen percent of people who bought, who complied with the original ordinance that was passed, you know, two years ago, or whatever it was, um, they're not permitted.
So, we're saying the scenario that I just brought up isn't permitted?
I, i- if you're talking about an accessory apartment, it's not permitted. If you're talking about a, one half of a duplex, I'm pretty sure that we envision that it is, it is permissible.
Right.
Okay, all right. So this would be the person's primary dwelling and there's attached apartments to it. So in that case, that would be permitted still.
Uh, you're, 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 it's just, it's really hard unless you give me like the square footage. If it's a six hundred square foot apartment, if it's a three-unit building and all the apartments are basically the same, and the person is in one, I think then we, are, are we allowing them to do short-term rental for both of the others? I don't remember if we.
That's kind of what we, that's in two fifteen, but that's kind of what we had permitted. Ownership and.
Still registered, still licensed, they're just, they.
It's not, it's not, not regulated, right?
And he lives on the property.
Residential use, yeah, it goes to the residential use.
Cause you're right, Pat, we did start with only one short-term on per lot. And, but the exception is if you're in a multifamily duplex.
Okay.
You know, you can do.
I, I've got a question. And I guess this goes back to two fifteen, but this whole conversation brings this up. I mean, so one owner, how many short-term rentals can one owner, how many licenses can one owner apply for? I mean, as many as you want. So, what does, how does that not incentivize someone to buy an entire apartment building and short-term rental it?
They gotta live in it.
They have to be primary.
Sure, sure. They can live in it, but then, you know, somebody buys like the entire mountain, the, you know, this, the, what is it, the bean house?
How many, how many buildings, apartment buildings do we have in town though, really?
More than you think.
More than you think, uh, you know, and if they're more than three units, they're in a different category of structure, they've gotta be sprint, I mean, there's a whole nother level of the type of structure, I mean.
Yeah, I would think that this wouldn't apply to an apartment building. I think what we, I thought what we had discussed was that it was duplexes and three-unit built, you know, three-unit buildings only. And, and, and I thought, and maybe I misremember this, cause I certainly do misremember some things. I thought that we had said that if they were on, in residence, that they can rent out one of the three unit, but not both as short-term rental, but I may be wrong about that. I think we were talking about one short-term rental per property.
That's my, I mean, I think.
You've got like somebody putting up a bunch of small camps under the new density code, and then, and then throwing, you know, seven different units in there.
Right, no, no, the, the way, the way I read it, whether it's an accessory apartment, whether it's a separate structure on your property, you are allowed one short-term rental per parcel.
Right.
So what is these are apartments with, that are attached to your primary residence?
They're on the same unit building.
One parcel of land might have, if it's an apartment building, if it's a three-unit building, that's on one parcel of land. And you get one short-term rental permit for one of the unit.
We weren't interested in grandfathering these types of scenarios in at all.
Why? We gotta be careful about grandfathering a little bit because of, when you look at, the ordinance is a little confusing, but when you look at the definition of a dwelling unit, it does talk about people living together, and we chatted about this previously. Living together is not staying, li- living together is not, when I short-term rent somewhere, whether it be for a week or for, for three days or four days, I'm not living there. I'm staying there. That's a transient guest, so. You know, some communities have gone down, down this from an enforcement perspective, saying, yeah, actually, you're, you're doing something that's not allowed, um, in town at all, um, because we don't allow, um, dwelling, your definition talks about living, it doesn't talk about being a transient person, um, a transient guest, so. Um, I just bringing that up, I, I think that's important.
Yeah, and, I mean, the, the, and, and to you, to just Jeremy's point about like, granted, like, we have all agreed that those people who are doing things correctly, if there is a lot, you know, can get, but that's as far as we're going, and that's as far as I think we should go on proposing.
They're first in for the, if. Right, they're in first.
And, and that's the, what kind of way it should be.
Okay.
All right, so I wanna just bring this all full circle here and to put poor Crisso to bed. I'm just gonna go ahead and, and make my own motion, cause I'm allowed to do that, and say, I propose a number of one fifty as the recommended cap to the select board, and anybody on this board is welcome to attend the select board meeting and provide their input as to whether they think they should go lower or higher. Um, the board doesn't have to be unanimous. We can do this as a recommendation, and then I think, you know, taking in Matt's information about how, and that this, this is supposed to be a motion, um, you know, but we, we can take in Matt's suggestion about how, uh, once we do have the data, the select board has the opportunity then to adjust up or down based on what they, you know, deem proper. Um, and that would be the best way to, to, to present it to the select board. Basically, we're just giving Jeremy and, and um, Shenley a number they can pencil in and say, this is sort of where the select board, or the, the planning board stands. Yeah. Whatever that was. The longest, the, the Pulk Mary in motion. So, okay, so we've got a second, and I'm all in favor, I'll, I'll, you know, just take a show of hands here. Looking like we're pretty unanimous. Is Matt throwing a hand up? There he goes. All right, so that's, that's unanimous on the planning boards. Uh, recommendation to the select board of a hundred and fifty. And, um, I do encourage anyone here to go ahead and attend if they can.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I, I don't know yet. I, I expect sometime late March.
Okay.
So, that, that's just something. Yeah, and, um, the other final item on our agenda, we do need to take care of here, um, is scheduling our next meetings for the.
Public hearing.
That's what I'm saying, the hearing for this, the two ninety, that's what I'm talking about.
And, and the, um, and you wanna combine that with a hearing on the housing amendments for Town Town?
And the peers?
Yes.
Well, no, we've, we've already got a hearing, the peers on the twenty-nine.
Yep.
But this is our, this is the problem, this is our tight schedule.
Right, so the question is, do we, do we wanna do? I think that trying to do these all in one night is gonna be way too much. So I would suggest that we do SDR and housing on the twenty-second.
To get the notice out? I guess it does.
Twenty-one days, yeah, three weeks.
For two ninety, I mean, two ninety is pretty.
Yeah, two ninety's easy.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, I mean, I think that was Jeremy's thought, but the two ninety's easy, the other housing thing is fairly easy, and then peers. But, but I hear you that we could, we could do, do those, we could divide them up. It just depends on how many times people wanna meet.
Right, and that was my, that was my point. I thought the twenty-ninth, we could do the housing one that may come up from the school, folks, right? That's fairly easy. You've had a conversation about this already, you had a hearing on it in essence already. And then, these changes to two ninety are nothing about the discussion that we just had.
Yeah.
On cap or any of that, that's nothing in chapter two ninety. So any public comment that you're gonna get is really about the definitions and what zones they're allowed in, and that's all that we're discussing on two ninety.
And allowed in every zone, and the definitions are what the definitions.
Yeah, and parking, yeah.
So I, I hear you, Crisso, but what do, what do you think about that?
If, if we think we can get it all done on the twenty-ninth, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Um, you know, and I think, you know.
And if we have to continue into the seventh, or do we have room to do that, Jeremy? Or is that the drop dead date?
Uh, technically, um, the select board's had, is supposed to have recommendations based on public, planning board, public hearing by March sixth. And their meeting is March fifth, so, um, you know, you could continue it to, maybe to March fourth, if needed.
I mean, I, I think, I think we can, we can power through it if we're all game to do it on the one night, rather than have this additional one. And, and hopefully really make very clear, even, I don't know if there's a way to make clear in the announcement, that there will be a whole nother discussion about all the other pieces of short.
The public notice that will be out and will be posted and go in the paper, it'll be proposed changes to definitions in chapter two ninety.
But at my point, my point being, we need to do a little more than, and say, there's gonna be a whole other big be meteor conversation with the select board down the road. But we can also, but we can set that out, Ethan, you can set that out at the beginning of the hearing and say, these are very limited changes. We're talking about everything else. We appreciate your comment. And given that, I'm happy to say, let's do the all on the twenty-ninth.
Okay, how's everybody feel about that?
I can go either way.
The motion to add those two hearings to the, on the February twenty-ninth?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? I see Matt's hand there, good, okay. Well, Crisso, wherever you are, I hope it's a nice place to be. I see you fading your background for us, so we can't quite see how luxurious it is.
Uh, it's not that, it's just there's actually a light fixture right behind me that was a little glaring.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Um, I did, before you got on, I showed the, I showed the group the view out the window of downtown Paris.
Oh, man, I'm really jealous.
But I literally, I literally, I, I landed at about eleven this morning, so.
Yeah, it's a rough one. You get to practice your French.
Are you in?
Uh, the seventh.
Okay.
It's almost time for a croissant and coffee.
Yeah, well, I'll motion to adjourn.
Nicely done. Do we have a second? I don't think we need to.